All right, with the foreman present, I'll call this meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled meeting for March 24th, 2016. We'll start this meeting with a word of prayer and our pledge. Since we have our guest here with us today, I'm going to ask McKinley Wheely, if you lead us in a word of prayer. And we'll ask Mr. Fox if you'll lead us in the pledge afterwards.
Yeah, well, Father, we just thank you for the day. Thank you for all that are in here. And I thank you for the opportunity that both the ball teams had, being here today. God, I just want to pray that you bless the day, help us to be thankful for it, and help us have a good day. Also, just, we thank you for all that you do for us, the things that you bless us with, being able to live in Lawrenceburg, and what Lawrence County means to each and every one of us. God, we thank you again for all you do, and for sending your son, in Jesus' name, amen.
Slute flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, gentlemen, in front of you, you should have a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. You should have also gotten a copy of this via email. If there's no additions, changes, or deletions to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve and a second. We got any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no discussion on the minutes, if you're in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And the minutes are approved. In form of announcements this morning, our city offices will be closed tomorrow and observe it's a good Friday. So if your garbage is picked up on Friday, it'll be picked up today, so it's a little bit late for me to say that, but get your garbage out to the road. All right, so we've got some recognitions to do today. We're going to do our employee recognitions here first. Gentlemen, this is something that we have begun to do, to recognize employees who have certain longevity and tenure here with the city of Lawrenceburg. It's certainly what makes our city great and a great place to work. And so we want to recognize some people here today with 30-plus years of service. We have several of our employees here for that. Gentlemen, if you will, I will call the names of those who have 30 years of service. And I'll call your name, if you would stand up. Michael Boyer, where are you at? Are you there? Stand up. Todd, you're here. 30 years. Michael's got 30 years. Todd has 30 years, 30 years plus of service. Linda Ayder, you've got over 30 years of service. Awesome. Jay Moore, you've got over 30 years of service. Jim Mittley, we've got Dory Sanders, you've got 30 years of service. And our own city attorney, Alan Betts, you've been here for 30 years plus also, so...
What an upset.
So I want to give these certificates of recognition to you guys for being part of the city of Lawrenceburg for all these years. Really do appreciate the work that's being done. Todd Bleecker here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to do a picture. Y'all will come up front.
All right.
Come on, Jay. You're getting a milk here, man. You're getting sent a little bit.
There you go. Mike, I'm standing right in front of you, Mayor.
I'm going to stand next to Jay. How do you want us? Here, I don't have to.
Get in there.
You're going to get in here because all of them...
Mayor, let's do this. Don't chew in the middle here. Come here.
Me?
Yes, I won't be in the middle here.
I'm going to put some item in the middle.
No, that's not the middle, Mayor. Come here.
I haven't been here 30 years.
You turn around, look at your right. There you go. I'm going to tell you. Now, Mayor, in case you wanted, you're in the middle, okay?
Oh, okay.
You'll probably smile, look out here, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we're going to finish y'all off here, okay? All right.
There you go.
Anybody want to give a speech?
No, no. Thank you very much.
We've got a pretty quick meeting today, and both teams have asked if they stay as long as they possibly can. So we'll go on with regular business. It's been good for you to see some of the businesses, see Lawrenceburg anyway. Chris, I'll turn the table over to you for your business this morning.
Okay, just have a few announcements this morning. City of Lawrenceburg is looking at two potential grants. I don't have a lot of information on these at the time. They've just been released. One is the TDEC Tourism Enhancement Grant. That's up to $50,000. I'm still trying to get information on that, and it deals with infrastructure, asset signs, wayfinding signs, public restrooms, and so forth, which could pay for a lot of signage to help draw people into Lawrenceburg and show off areas that we'd like to highlight. Also, there is a USDA Farmer's Market Promotion Program and Local Food Promotion Program. Again, it's a grant to help recognize and enhance farmers' markets, so that's one that we're also interested in and looking at some information on that. Also glad to announce that we received a letter yesterday from TML, our insurance carrier, that our base rates are going to decrease. At least in a few areas, our base rates will go down. Workers' comp down 2%, property down 2%, general liability down 10%, auto damage down 3%. No changes in areas, no emissions, and no change in auto liability. Law enforcement was up 6.5%. These rates are not dependent just on our activity alone, but TML comes up with these. But we'd like to recognize Tina and Doug for the work they do to help lower the rates. Also, the city is conducting interviews for two new PW positions. One is for a position that never was filled, that Jerry has been without a man for a while, and interviewing for that. The other is for a employee that's leaving the city. We've had one that's recently submitted his resignation. MTS is going to be here today also, a traffic consultant, to examine the traffic congestion at E.O. Coffin School in the mornings. We've always had a problem there, whether it's loading and unloading in the mornings. Don't know what solutions are available, but that's what the purpose of this study is, to see if there's any way to alleviate that traffic congestion in the mornings and the afternoons. And also, I'd like to invite each of you to a wellness program this afternoon at 11:30. We'll be providing lunch, and that's going to be going over our health and wellness program that we're kicking off. It'll run for six months through October. The goal is to increase employee health and wellness, which, again, is one of the ways we can help lower our insurance rates, is by promoting better health with our employees. So we'll be having a kickoff meeting on that at 11:30, a lunch, and y'all are all welcome to attend that. That'll be here at City Hall. And that is all I had this morning for the department manager report. Jay Moore would like to present about the hydrant flowing that's going on this week.
I just want to remind everybody, we sent a press release out to the papers and radio stations, and I know it was in the paper yesterday. Beginning March 21st, which I know has passed, but we're starting our hydrant flowing process, which we go out and clean around the hydrants. We have to flow them, get the flows off of them for ISO, make sure they're all working properly. They haven't been no valves accidentally left partially shut or closed during repair work being done. So just want to remind you, the public and everybody, that that's going on. If you have dingy water, when you get to your residence or whatever, run your faucet for a little while, a little bit, see if that clears it up. In most cases, that'll clear it up. If not, call Lawrenceburg Utilities, and they'll get with us, or one of us, us or them one will come out and flow some hydrants and get that line cleaned up. But we try to flow them for a period of time, but that's not the problem, because in flowing this, it also knocks the particles loose in the pipe, and it helps clean the pipe out and helps flow the water and keep the chlorine moving around. So any questions on that, feel free to contact the fire department or Lawrenceburg Utilities.
Jay, is that all business you have, Chris?
Real quick, at the meeting, Lawrenceburg Utility Board meeting Tuesday evening, I'll get Vic to explain it better, but the plans have been put in place to correct the water flow problems in the subdivisions behind Calvary Hill Church of God up in that area.
We've got to take proof plants and lay water lines up there, and some outside the line, improve the flow to that area. And we're in the process of designing the line to tie into Gray subdivision, coming the backside of it. We're working on those.
Mayor? Yes, sir. Before you get... Are we in the process of working something, getting something together to do the amnesty days and the cleanup project that you spoke about? Yeah, that's... I don't know if, Chris, we have anything to report on that today. I actually rode down every street and every alley over in Crowder Field and in some other areas of town. And I was going to get a work session on not just that. I think there's going to be a couple of areas of town that we want to... What I would like to see is a couple of TIF areas created here in town for the purpose of revitalization of residential areas.
Yeah.
And so that will be a topic, I guess, that we have to... It takes some legal work to do and things like that. But when the TIF was first created, it was created for reenforcement of blighted areas of town, and so we want to use it for that purpose if possible. And so, but that's all part of that. But we do have... Jimmy, you might speak to this better. You actually went and made a video, and some of the stuff's been cleaned up since we've actually looked at it, but...
Some of it, probably.
Right, not much of it, but we're getting ramped up to have a... It's not going to amnesty day, it's going to be amnesty week for at least one session a month. There you go.
I'd like to ask Officer Mittley, are most of the folks that live over there, are they acceptable to receiving some help? And do they have an idea that they want to better their properties and clean up their properties? Or what's your gut feeling? You're over there a lot.
I think that they're probably not going to care whether we clean it up or not, for the most part.
Okay.
If we won't see it cleaned, we're going to have to do it.
Our problem is those alleys. They're always going to be a problem, I suppose, because if we leave... That's where all the trash accumulates, or most of the trash accumulates. Jim, you've got a video, don't you, that any of the councilmen want to look at that video and just see what we're talking about cleaning up over there? And the scope of the project is unreal.
Some people's vans over there now. In one particular spot over there, the people in the area, and probably from, may even be from outside of town, coming there, and they dump stuff in the alley in the 400 block of, between Fourth and Third Street. And, you know, nobody knows where it came from. And I believe the people there, I believe it's 417, 40, I don't know where they came from. I looked up one day, and there it was. And I don't know what the answer would be for that, but that's some of the stuff we're looking at.
Okay.
There's a house on Fifth Street that's got some mattresses laying out in the alley behind it. They're not mine. They didn't go from this house.
Yes, there's, you know, to be fair, I think there's areas across our city that need to have a lot of attention paid to them, and so it's not just that area. So with... Jim, I mean, you thought about the month of April, doing this the whole month of April?
Yes.
So, you know, basically, we understand that the city, that not everybody has ways or means to carry that kind of stuff to the dump, and so we want to provide that for them at least one day a year. If it takes a month, it takes a month. So that's our goal, is to get it cleaned up and just add a little bit better quality of life for those that live in those areas.
Thank you.
Yep. Couple of questions I had. The TML consultants that's coming down from the traffic, are they going to specifically just look at that area only? Here's what I'm getting at. I would love to have a traffic study done at the new intersection of the bypass and Highway 43 South, especially for traffic traveling east that are turning north onto US 43, and also for traffic traveling west, turning south on 43. That's just a matter of time until something horrific happens there. And so if we can get somebody, if TML films that, or it's just not a good traffic pattern there?
Say it again. What are you talking about?
The new bypass down Highway 43.
Yeah.
So if you're heading west and trying to turn north on 43, there is no lane of ingress there or anything. You have to, basically, you have to pull out in the turning lane of the southbound traffic to get to merge in. Same way going, if you're trying to turn south, if you're heading east and you're trying to turn south on 43, you have to turn into the turning lane of northbound traffic. And so, and I'm noticing a lot more traffic on that road now that it's open, and so it's just a matter of time until something happens there.
If they have time, we'll go down and take a look at that today. Today, they were...
We can just get it scheduled.
We will. I'll discuss it with them today. If we have a chance, we'll examine the problem. Today, they were, they're planning to look at the E.O. Coffin issue, but if we have time, we'll certainly take a look at that other. And we're still waiting from the last traffic study they did, which was at Military, North Military and Weekly Creek, or Hick Street there. At that point, we stopped trying to determine that. They're still running some traffic models on that to determine what their recommendation will be, so we may revisit that issue as well.
Okay. And one last thing on this... It's probably been three or four meetings ago, maybe back in January, that we had a possible date of April 1 for sanitation, our new dumpsters and new trucks. Is that still on track, or can we...
I'll have to check with Gary Wayne on that. I'm not sure he... Has there been any problems with the delivery? But I know that we should be around that time period. We're expecting everything. He's got a place to stage all that, so as far as I know, it's on schedule. It could be a week or two delayed, but we should be close to that timeline.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your report, Chris. I don't have any old business on the table. We'll go to new business and legal issues. Alan, I'll turn the table over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to authorize Lawrenceburg Fire Department to apply for recruitment and retention Safer Grant, Food Department of Homeland Security for 15 volunteers for a period of four years at no cost to the city. This resolution is for your consideration today.
Motion to approve.
You've got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion on this resolution?
I've got two questions.
Okay.
In the second paragraph, whereas the volunteers will receive a stipend fee per call, how much are we talking about there?
That's part of the grant. Do we pay $10 per call?
$10. And then the next paragraph says, whereas at the end of the four-year grant, these volunteers may be retained at a nominal cost to the city. Now, what does that word "nominal" mean?
Whatever, if we decide to retain them and continue the $10 per call, or if we decide to retain them and pay them like we're paying our reserves now at 10% of the hourly rate when they're called out. That's what the cost will be.
All right. At the end of the grant, do we have to do this?
We don't have to.
Or can we reject it?
We don't have to, but that's part of the recruitment routine, trying to build your force and keep people in place.
Chief, how do you select about 15 volunteers? Are these people that are on retainer or on reserve, or...
No, this will actually be in addition to the people we have now.
Yes.
And our goal in this, this is a huge win. If it works out the way, if we're awarded the grant and it works out the way that we want it to, we'll actually end up having 30 volunteers, or 30 reserves and volunteers combined. And they'll be required to work a 24-hour shift a month. And this grant also pays a stipend and fee for them to work that shift, which they'll get $50 a shift, which is not, you know, not a lot, but it's something for them to come in and work, and work a 24-hour shift, train, make calls. It gives us another man at the station to work. So they'll also get their $50 per month for their shift, and they'll get $10 per call that we have callouts for them to come to, and all that's paid for by the federal government. As far as to answer your question, my thoughts on that is, you know, in this section of the volunteers, we expand our mileage limit for these 15 volunteers to the countywide to be able to pull in a good group. And we would leave our mileage limit in place for our paid reserves that we have in place, because we need, you know, we need people close. Some of these people we'll be getting, but we may not see them. But just that 24-hour shift and a call or two throughout the year is dependent.
Is there a minimum age on these calls?
18 years of age, really.
18 years of?
Mm-hmm. And they'll also, in the grant, it also pays for training. They have to have so much training before we can even put them on the fire ground. It'll also pay for that training, and we've added some more money in there for other training. If we get the grant, I think I've added in enough for at least half of them to go to get their EMT license, and it paid for that. It also pays for a administrator of the grant that we can put in the fire department or existing personnel in the fire department in the grant. Pays for their turnout gear. We'll get 15 new sets of turnout gear for these personnel. Pays for station wear, for them to wear, just like we wear uniforms at the station. We figured in a five-person loss over a four-year period, and if we lose those five people, we rehire five people, and it buys us five more brand-new sets of turnout gear and the station wear for those people coming in.
So it's a great program as far as retention and building you a base, a pool of possible employees for you to hire in the future.
True.
And after four years, if they don't cut it, then you can let them go, or somebody you can keep on as a paid call position and still have a pool to choose from.
Correct.
Sounds good. Win-win.
So when they're paid per call, is that a first responder call too, or is it just fire calls?
That would just be fire calls. Calls, if we do a call out on like structured fires, and we need more manpower...
As mad emergencies, I would...
Yes.
There's not a lot of money in it for the person on sale?
No, and that's the thing, you know, this program was built for departments like ours and volunteer departments. Volunteer departments have to do the same thing, a paid per call. So we just, I actually just learned a little bit more about it this year, and we're just on the verge of learning what all else it will do. So that's the reason I really want to try to apply for. I think it can really change the dynamic of our department, you know, if we get this, because this is a guaranteed four-year thing, and, you know, at the end of four years, we can reevaluate, and if we want to reapply for this same grant to keep those people on, we can do that. And there's been departments that's done that and got the grant again, you know, to keep those people personally alone. Chad, leave per call. We figured an average of 50 calls a year, you know, because you had to average over a four-year period, and we averaged about 50 calls a year that they would be making.
So do you call all these people out? Like you have a call, you call, everybody come off?
We haven't got to that point yet.
I mean, were there 15 of them?
Yeah, we haven't got to that point yet. You know, I don't foresee, I don't see, foresee the possibility of that happening. I foresee a first alarm, second alarm, possibly, depending on the call and the structure, you know, with the fire. But till we get the grant, we hadn't even stepped into that process yet, because, you know, this is a, we may get it, we may not get it. And if we get it, then we'll step in that process and start a plan.
When will you know, Jay, whether you get it or not?
It will be sometime this year, but I wouldn't look for any notification before probably July or August, because we're just, you know, we just got an ARPA grant. We've got a resolution to finish that up today on here also, and we've applied for the Safer Grant, and then this will grant, and then there's a Fire Prevention Grant. So it usually takes till August or September before they give them all awarded.
Thank you.
All right, that's a good discussion. Any more discussion on this resolution? Seeing no more discussion on the resolution, if you're in favor of this resolution, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that resolution is approved.
Next gentleman to resolution, Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to amend Resolution 2015, 28, 5D, to amend the grant request to purchase additional equipment from Mid-South Emergency Equipment for the Lawrenceburg, Etheridge, and New Prospect Fire Departments. This resolution is for your consideration today.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second. Any discussion on this?
Is this 100% grant?
This is actually the ARPA grant we got through, and it's a 5% match. So we will have a little out of each department to share as far as federal matches, like $292 of the power. There's some extra in there, and Etheridge actually spent a little bit of extra money, and I spent just a little bit of extra money out of my budget to finish the project up that we wanted to do. The federal match part is $37,109, I think, so a little bit extra in there as far as Etheridge is spending their part, and we're spending ours, but the rest of it's granted.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing no further discussion, if you're in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that resolution's approved.
Next gentleman to resolution, Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to declare certain property in the police department surplus to be used towards new weapons and related equipment for the police department, and that's for your consideration today.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this resolution?
Still proud.
I got a motion to approve.
My second.
On a second? Any discussion on this?
I would like to get one thing changed in the police department. I don't think these are weapons, they're tools of their trade. You know, weapons are something that a criminal uses. I'd like to see it be called tools from now on.
There you go.
I just think it's a good idea, because y'all are not using them just to act and burglarize somebody or something like that, so they're a tool to y'all. And I talked to Darren about that once before, and weapons makes it sound so almost criminal itself.
There you go.
Just my opinion. As the old saying goes, now just saying.
Oh, man. Are you just saying that from now on, or are you making that as emotional as this resolution?
No, I'm just, I'm complaining again.
All right, that's fine. We'll take it all. All right. Any further discussion on this resolution?
Mr., I've had the same thing said to me about my golf clubs, too. Oh, wet years of weapons of mass destruction.
All right. If you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that resolution's approved.
All my business today, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we're excited to have both basketball teams here from Lawrence County High School, and we want to recognize them for their achievements this year. I'm going to ask Chad to help me out with this. We've got, I'm going to start off with the girls team. Chad, if you want to say a few words about the girls team, we'll present them with their certificates.
We are excited, Dave, to have both the girls and boys basketball team from Lawrence County High School here. Both head coaches are, were unavailable today. I think Coach Porter for the girls is in observations, and Coach Clark is in Chicago, I think. So I think he's recruiting or something, I don't know. The girls this year were 27-3. They were district champions. They were undefeated in the District 12-0, and then, of course, won the district tournament and got beat in the region tournament. A great year. Anytime you go 27-3 in District A AAA, you've done something. And so, and undefeated, and so it was a great year by them. For our boys, they were 21-12 this year. They won the district tournament at Coffey County, had a great run in the year, and for the second consecutive year to make it to the substate. And it's one of the unique and neat things about living in Lawrenceburg, is every Tuesday and Friday night during basketball season, you can go over to Ralph Bench Memorial Gym, and it's packed, and folks supporting our young student athletes, and it really is a neat thing. Having two young boys myself, you know, they play basketball in the house, and one day they're Kurt Kemp, and they're Bryce Clift, and next day they're Cade Roland, and they rotate who they want to be, from McKinley Wheely all the way down through all the kids on the basketball team. And so it really is neat growing up in this community and being able to support these kids as they play basketball, and they're a joy to watch night in and night out. And today, we're honored to recognize you for your achievements on the basketball floor, but as well, we're honored to...
Off of...
And, yeah, off the floor, you're a great ambassador for Lawrence County High School and this community, and we appreciate all that you do.
Absolutely. Good job. The girls, the girls will come up front. Chad will give you your certificate, get us picture, buddy, with you.
Come on, you're coming too, buddy.
Howard, where are you going to do this at?
Just keep on moving now.
All girls in the mic or my else on the phone?
I know who did, but see, move your back.
Bear, yeah.
I seen you.
I'll do it now, since they moved right there.
Now I got y'all's attention, okay?
No, I'm not. They've gone. They've been over there in front of you. I'm gonna have some fun with them now.
No, he just got...
Mama gets to get one. I'm gonna shoot him again, okay?
Alright, guys, y'all saw how the girls did it, didn't you?
Stood up and put their arms around each other.
We need to raise the chandelier.
Yeah, good luck standing behind these girls.
If you stood back there, Mike, if you stood back there behind Cliff, then you'd be about in home, okay?
Say something about my dead dog.
Got it?
Thank you, guys.
Alright, so stick around. This is the most important part of the meeting. So, I appreciate everybody being here today and getting a little glimpse of how city government works. It's not too exciting, but this is how your city functions, and so, I'm glad you got to see a part of that today. This is the most important part of the meeting. Chad, I'll entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
This means adjourn.